Hold it, Dan.
When is that ever stopped us?
Good. Call the meeting to order if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, for meeting today, conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our efforts may honor you. Thank you for being our sordance of guidance today. Amen.
Okay, before we begin, we have a couple of changes from the original agenda. Item three B, the minutes of June tenth have been deleted. Item nine E, waiver of landfill tipping fees for stream sweeper program has been added. And calendar item twelve A has been added. Are there any other changes or modifications?
I have none.
In that case, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, that takes us to public appearances. Park and Recreation Quarterly Report. Tim.
All right, good afternoon. Don't think I've ever seen just an A under public appearances. That's quite interesting.
It's you.
There you go.
Yeah, we can spend all our time on you.
Our snapshot that you had included in your packet point out a few of the things. We have our spring numbers from our programs and our summer activity youth programs that are coming up. One thing I like to point out is the Kings Dominion Spring Savings Days. We sold during the spring, we sold fifty-two tickets this year as opposed to forty-two so last year, so that's up a little bit. And we have Kings Dominion Parks and Recreation Days starting June twenty-seventh through August third. Tickets will be thirty-five dollars during that period as opposed to the sixty-four dollar gate price, so.
Is the Kings Dominion ticket a reflection on the economy?
Probably.
It's another measure.
But we sold about three hundred and eighty tickets during the month of July last year, so we're looking forward to a big month. We've already had one family come and get a block of sixty tickets for a family reunion, so that's a big chunk right off the bat, so that's very good. Now to our highlight reel that we always do. Is the TV on in front there?
Yes.
Very good. Last time, I think we missed the first couple because the TV wasn't in front, but. Our Michael's Mile Event, it was a one-mile run, kids' run we held down at Locust Grove, end of the county. It benefited, it was a fundraiser for the Michael's Gift Program, which had actually got below, the funds had dropped so low they had put it on hold. So Office on Youth ran a raffle in conjunction with the mile run, and we had about twenty kids show up for it. And Susan Turner, who is here, her son, he's in the pictures here, he won first place. That's her husband and daughter there and Susan as well. And her son's the one stretching with the sister there. We competed down at Locust Grove Middle School, well, behind the mothball school in elementary or primary school, set up a course. It was a half-mile course. The older kids ran two laps, the kindergarten and first grade carried around a half a mile. So something we want to build on, we hope to, we think we'll do much better next year. Our first year is always tough, but we want to build it into something like the Great Train Race they have in Fredericksburg where they have just tons of kid in every age group. So it's something we're going to build on for the future. We had a British soccer, our British Soccer Camp we hold every summer through Challenger Sports. We also this summer have a Tetra Brazil Soccer Camp where they send the coaches from Brazil. But this is Coach Adam here. They came and did a free skills clinic and gave away two scholarships to the summer camp. And he actually was a goaltender in the Premier Mid League in England, so he's got quite a bit of experience. Challenger Sports sends over a thousand coaches from Britain for that program and two hundred and fifty coaches now from Brazil. So the Brazil part's a little more technical and we hope that that's going to be a good offering. We've already heard some folks that go to Culpeper for that that are glad we're having it in Orange this year, so they'll be at Booster Park. A wheelchair basketball event that we held, we hold each year. It was cosponsored with the basketball teams from the high school. And we brought in teams from a capital conference, players from Virginia, Maryland, DC coming on Orange and play. There's a team in Baltimore, two in Washington, one in Harrisonburg, one in Charlottesville, one in Richmond, and one in Virginia Beach. And all those folks come in here to Orange and we divide them into four teams. And the fellow that you see here shooting the free throw, and he's actually in the blue, looks like he's going to be dunked on, but that'd be kind of hard to do from the wheelchair. But he actually played professionally in Germany for a few years, and so there's some opportunity. These guys are world-class athletes. The gentleman here in the red shirt shooting the ball just graduated from University of Maryland. He'll be going overseas this fall to play professionally as well, so. Some real good talent. You see the crashing and banging. The high school basketball team provided lunch for us and the conference gave them a donation instead of just opening up the concession stand taking a chance on what they sell and not sell and having leftover pizza. We just had the parents come in and donate the food and do a cookout and then we just made a flat-out contribution, so it was all profit to them. Go through. Actually, I'm not participating in this because of my bum knees and we, if you picture, that was the score of the championship game. We had two games in the morning. We divided them up. Two teams played and then the other two teams played. We had lunch and then the two losers played for third, fourth, and the two winners played for the championship. And that was the finals of our championship. And there is our winning team. And if, some of you may recognize in the front row, the double amputee that's there, that's Orange resident Jeff McDaniel, better known to some of the firefighters and locals as Nubbin. And you can see him many times on Route fifteen between Orange and Gordonsville sitting in his golf cart waving the traffic as it goes by or riding around town on his skateboard. He will forego the chair a lot of times and just sit on the skateboard and pedal around, so quite a unique individual. And the gentleman, the older gentleman on the end of the front row is Bill Green. He's a Vietnam vet that was injured in service in seventy-two. So he's been playing wheelchair basketball for forty years. And he runs a program in DC. And a lot of these players for other teams have gone through his program and now live in other areas and play on other teams. But the kids he starts with, if you get your grades, you follow the rules and you play basketball, he gets them into college somewhere. And a lot of them go through Edinburgh, a lot of them, there's two of his kids that played in the French League and had, two twenty-five-year-olds had an apartment on the Riviera. Played in France and they've sent him over there for the season. They give him a place to live and a rental car and a chair. And so he has put a lot of kids from inner-city DC through college, so pretty cool guy. And they all loved Orange and enjoyed coming here and look forward to it every year. It's kind of centrally located when you think about DC, Harrisonburg, Virginia Beach, and Richmond, so we are kind of the hub for all those and we're glad to have this event again. Our Hockey Chicks Unite Field Hockey Camp. The Grabels, or the coaches Steve and Trish Grabel at the high school, they run this program. And you can see, this is the picture of the T-shirts and the group. This Karen Gibson from upstairs in Human Resources. Her granddaughter is the tall one on the back left, you see. A lot of these girls, the first year we had thirty-nine girls in the group and fourteen of them made the JV team. So it is a feeder program for the high school. One of the instructors this year was in that program two years ago as a participant, so it directly affects the high school and we're very glad to keep doing that program. Our Rapidan River Day, a special day for our special friends with autism, was supposed to be this past Saturday, and I hope to have lots of cool pictures for you all, but with the impending storms and the weather beforehand that caused the river to rise, we decided to postpone that till August and hope for an enjoyable experience, safe experience for all. The water was flowing a little strong and it was quite muddy, so we're going to hold off on it and have that in August. Barbersville Park, there's lots of good things always happening up at Barbersville Park. The picture you see here is the Old School Outlaws. It's a travel team that's based out of Barbersville. They won the state and the nation's, Baseball Nations Program, and they'll be going to the World Series and I think it's in Michigan. But they use the field two times a week. We have two travel teams practicing there and Gordonsville Little League softball, so it is getting used quite a bit. Our shed, our maintenance shed up there, Mr. Robert Anthony, who is a Barbersville resident and he is on our foundation board, had a bunch of extra shingles that were donated to his church for a project that they had. He donated them to us. We got the central Virginia workforce, regional jail workforce to come out. They had, they have amazingly skilled labor of all sorts that come out, and they put this brand-new roof on us. They estimated a fifteen-hundred to seventeen-hundred dollar roof job that was done for free through the labor and the donated materials. They also worked on our backstop. This is the backstop on the field. I don't have any before pictures because it was kind of embarrassing the way it was before. It was falling off the post and presented dangers from being stuck up at the bottom, and they came in there and I was getting estimates from different places for new backstop, and they said, no, we can fix this. And we got ratchet straps, they got ladders, they ratcheted as far as they could and had me buy these nails that are shaped like a horseshoe that have barbs the opposite way. And it looks like a brand-new backstop and we've gotten so many compliments on it. And once again, it was the cost of the nails. So this workforce, I don't know who got us back in the program, but it is a valuable program to us as well as the airport uses them at Booster. This is the boards they fix on the fence around the playground as well as this tree. The dark vein you see down the tree was poison ivy and totally engulfed the whole tree. They came in, sprayed it, cut it, hacked it, pulled it off the tree, and it looks amazing. So the work they do is quite amazing. They go to Booster Park, usually one, I give them one day a week when they're here. And last week, last time they were here, they got thirty-two bags of trash. They have every trash bag around, picked up all the trash, carry them to the dumpster. They run the grass trimmers on all the fences and all the ditches and it's just a huge asset. And Orange U Sports appreciates it so much that they have that to help them out with their maintenance. July is National Parks and Recreation Month, and we will be featuring our Plan in the Park event as well as we're the debut of our Orange County Parks and Recreation Facebook page. It's the way to communicate with folks now and we're going to move forward with that step. The National Parks and Recreation Association, their national slogan is "Out is In." So they want you to get out and participate, and I'm going to do a little plug for Montpelier while I'm here. I'm not sure if a lot of the folks know it in Orange, but the gates to Montpelier are open from nine to five every day. And it's free. You're charged to go in the mansion, but you can go walk the ground, sit out there. Several times on a nice Sunday, my wife and I have grabbed a sandwich from somewhere, went out, had a picnic, and went and walked the trails of the woods. And that's right here in our backyard and it's something that everybody can do. I think Montpelier had the stigma for so long that it was, you had to pay to get in the gate. And you don't have to do that anymore. You can go out there and take advantage of it. And I think it's something we need to get the message across, so we'll be promoting that through the month of July as well. And lastly, our Plan in the Park is again this year, July fifth at Booster Park. The gates open at five. Skydive Orange will be doing a special jump at five-thirty, and then we'll have the live entertainment starting at five-forty-five booked up through nine o'clock with the fireworks to follow. Here's the ad that goes in the paper. We are continually changing and as we get new sponsors and adding to it, and we are still seeking sponsors for the event and anything we get can help enhance it. So that's about it. Parks and Recreation. Any questions?
I see you haven't been doing life.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next we have public comment. Anyone signed up? Okay. In that case, we'll go to board comment.
I've got a little something. Today, myself, Josh from Planning and Zoning, and then Amanda Suttle from the Chamber, attended a Virginia broadband planning strategies workshop. About a four-hour workshop, very informative. I believe Josh actually went in Mr. David's place today, so I'm sure they'll have more to share with it. But very informative and a lot of information that we can use, especially as we move a lot ahead with the Route Three, planning and our public safety. Radio system and everything. And probably the biggest single point they hit on today was regionalize your radio systems. Both Culpeper and Louisa are also looking at new radio systems. They're going to have to do that. And they said, everything from the infrastructure to the cost is well worth it on regionalizing that. So I'll make sure I get copies of this to everybody and I'm sure that Mr. David's going to have that and peruse all that information as well. So very, very worthwhile workshop today. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All righty, let's move on to the action items. First, the approval of the final pilot program, blah, 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 blah. Brian.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, supervise our apps, brought forward an idea that we would engage working with local businesses to promote employee well, health and wellness, particularly the fact that we're self-insured. So any, any efforts we can do to have a healthy workforce certainly translate to a healthy worker, a productive worker, but also in the economics of it all helps to the bottom line. So as a pilot program, we began talking with Anytime Fitness of seeing how we might be able to incentivize participation in regular working out. And so what you have before you is the fruits of that work. Essentially, it works through the relationship between the employee and the county, and between the county and the business. What it means is that if somebody fulfills their twenty-five in a three-month period, then the county, well, let me first back up. The county would pay the fifty-nine-dollar security fee, which is a one-time fee, and then the employees would get the corporate rate. They would, the relationship is between the business and the employee. We would reimburse the employee equivalent to three months if they visit at least three ti- twenty-five times within the preceding three months. So at the end of the day, the cost would be about two hundred and twenty-two dollars for the county and two hundred and twenty-two dollars for the employee. So we feel pretty good about where we are. I think Anytime Fitness, the Crowders, feel pretty good about where we are. I would also add is that we received another proposal from another place about something similar to this. Now that the county attorney's developed the legal documents, it really is a template for us to go forward. And I know Tim and I are going to be taking up this another business and seeing how we might be able to bring that forward as well. Again, this drives home the employee health and wellness. I think it's a good, good start. What we will do is we will also have to take look backs, employees' acceptance of this. I mean, we don't want to do something that's not working. But at this point in time, I think we're recommending this for approval. The other part is, is we want you to know that we're going to be, there's some monies within the Human Resources budget that we're going to reprogram for organizational development that would constitute this. But if we get ten employees, you know, it's a twenty-two-hundred-dollar expense per year on a twelve-year basis, twelve-month basis, so. With that, I certainly can answer any questions. And the county attorney, Allison, has done quite a bit of work on getting this together. I know Glenda's here too.
I actually have just a couple of clarification questions on the, on the agreement itself. I'm on the first page. Item four, the very end is where the employee's paying the fee. I want to make sure, the twenty-five-hour requirement is for alternating three months? Is that, is that what we're saying?
I had, I had the same question, but I'm listening to him explain it. It sounds to me, what we're worried about is the twenty-five hours they're doing during the three months that the employee's paying for it. Then we pick up the rest. If he doesn't do twenty-five hours in the county-paid thing, we didn't, we didn't make an issue with that. It's when, it's the, the three months prior to each time the county assumes responsibility.
The way it's structured, you, you work your twenty-five, you earned three months of us paying.
That's right.
And if you work, you'll do your twenty-five again, you earn three more months of us paying.
But you do that on, on your own nickel.
You pay for three and you rack up twenty-five credits, and if you hit your twenty-five credits of going to workout, then that gets you the next three months on us.
My first reaction with that, should that be employer? But then when I thought about it, after his explanation, I got a little.
Yeah, the business, the contractual relations between the employee and Anytime Fitness.
Understood.
We're reimbursing.
Right. And then on the, on the question of reimbursement, item eight there, actually two, two questions about that. We don't put any time on that. I mean, would it be helpful to let the employee know that on or about the beginning of the three-month period or it's going to be at the end of the three-month period or something, just so they know when they can count on it? And then my second question is, does this become taxable income to them such that their deductions and withholdings and all those kind of things?
Yeah, the answer to the second question is yes, it would be taxable income.
Okay, I assume that would be the case.
Then it's not a reimbursement.
Yeah, so then it's not a reimbursement. It's income. And I don't, I don't care. I just want to be.
Reimbursement in this document, the way, the IRS doesn't care what we're saying here. The IRS just cares what we're doing. So when we issue them a check, yeah, the only way it's wouldn't be is if we had our own in-house gym, then we would, that would be acceptable.
Right, right.
But given that money, it is, it will show up on there to be too.
And it seems to me if, I mean, I don't know that we, we want to necessarily pin a date certain that they're going to have it, but the way this is written now, we could give them a check on the first day of the three-month period or the eighty-ninth day. And we ought, we ought to be able to nail that down a little bit better than that. And I don't know what the intent is.
He's earned it as soon as he finishes three months. He or she's finished his three months. So then, and.
So what, I mean, I'm really, what, what is our intent?
I, I don't know, but I kind of left that open-ended so that we could just, whatever internal policy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've got to look at Glenda because we treat this as a payable, not as a payroll, right? As an account payable. So.
It could be payroll. I mean, you could, it could be with, you know, the, the first payroll after the end of the period or something like that. I don't, I don't really care. I just, I'm looking for a little bit of.
Well, I, my understanding was that we were going to be paying the company, not the employee.
Well, that's not what this says.
Well, basically, they can do it either way. Basically, the employee can, we can do it under paragraph seven. You can have a payroll deduction and we just deduct it out of your payroll and pay the directly. And in fact, I think there's a signature on the end there.
Right.
That I select to do it or I will pay Anytime Fitness directly. If you look, there's two checkboxes. So if they do checkbox one, none of this is applicable. It only applies, paragraph eight only applies if they do checkbox two, which is that they're going to pay directly, Anytime Fitness.
But if he's deducting seventeen oh eight, he's paying the entire, every, he's paying the entire four hundred and forty-four. And so we still need to send him a check for the hundred and eleven.
Right, the seventeen oh eight is the way the situation I think is now. I mean, we have paid, we've had payroll deduction for Anytime Fitness. This is just the incentivizing. Maybe, Mr. White, we can, you can make this to include in a revision that speaks to employee a check in the amount of a hundred and a half's reimbursement for cost as soon as the Department of Finance can process such reimbursement. What, what I think is going to happen is we're going to have this period between payrolls and appounds payables, and they're not going to follow cleanly on first of the month, middle of the month, or last of the month, because they, it all depends on when.
And all the employers are going to be on different months.
The intent is to do it sooner than later. How's that?
I'm not looking for a date certain. I'm, I'm just trying to see what our intent is.
Well, there's the implication of reasonableness in any agreement, so that's why I left it blank. I just, the implication is it a reason, in a reasonable amount of time.
Sort of like we get reimbursed for our mileage?
And we might say.
Or how about, how about, you know, when you work for someone and if you go to school and want your classes? I mean, I'm here to tell you, the day your class is completed, you're not getting your reimbursement. You're getting your reimbursement at the time when reimbursements are cut. Some people, you know, while you might get paid every week, their only payroll is only going to really do reimbursements or payables on the last day of the month. So I personally would, would say that that would be left up to payroll, and I don't know that we need to.
To define it.
To define it, because what you're going to have is, somebody's going to join the gym July first, somebody's going to join the gym July fifteenth, somebody's going to join the gym August twenty-seventh, some, so no one time is it ever going to be convenient. And I think it would be better for, for payroll people to say, this is, you know, whatever day they do it is the day they do it and.
Pretty much the first month is the intent to get the money back to.
And so, and what you're, what you're getting here is you're getting a monthly report from anytime. So it's when the, when the monthly report comes in that we, we're. They can add up the three months and say, yep, so-and-so raised it and they sent, called them a check.
Here's maybe, maybe one way of looking, because I, I think we're trying to incent good behavior, employee health and wellness, so we want to get them the money as quickly as we can.
But I also wanted to, you know, set expectations and meet expectations. Surprises aren't good. I'm concerned about saying we're going to issue them a check for a hundred and eleven dollars. We aren't. We're going to issue them a check for, it's gross a hundred and eleven, but net, some other number. And I'm not trying to be picky, it's just I'm concerned about expectations.
Do we have to?
If I open my envelope and that check doesn't say a hundred and eleven dollars, I'm going to come say what.
We could add the subject to any, any, any.
Or just that gross amount.
If that were, I mean, we could.
Yeah, we can add the words gross. We'll issue to the employee the gross instead of the word in check. We just taste it to issue to employee a, the gross amount of a hundred and eleven dollars.
Yeah, I think that.
Or you could actually issue them a check for a hundred and eleven. They're responsible for the taxes come, but we require taxes.
I don't, I don't think we have that option. We have to withhold.
We have to hold the fike.
Yeah, I'm with you on managing expectations.
Well, I just would let them know obviously that this would then therefore be taxable income. But if you're paying for a gym membership and you think you can get some of it back, it's better than not getting any of it back. And if people want to work out, they want to work out, they're not really working out because they want to get the money back. They're working out because they want the results. So getting that.
We're not putting in twenty-five hours just for this.
Oh, no, no.
And stop saying hours, it's visits.
Okay, twenty-five visits, got you. All right.
Excellent.
So what the, the words, what were the words you used? Gross, gross?
I think, I think Glenda has something to say.
Well, I was just going to ask you, I mean, getting into it as a taxable benefit, I mean, I, if we were just paying the company, how would it be different from providing any other benefit like the EAP program or insurance or, or anything like that? I mean, is there not a way where we could?
Because I would think it's because it's incentivized. Not everybody's getting it.
Yeah, gym, gym memberships are not a deductible expense.
Even if we pay for it directly?
Yeah, the only way, if, if it was mandatory and everybody had to have a gym membership, then it might be. But in a situation where it's an elective.
For your health, health plan?
Yeah.
Deductible, I mean, non, non-taxable based on the health plan?
Right, it's just like having a car. It's just like only law enforcement doesn't have to, you know, in, in emergency services.
But if you've got a car given to you to drive home, you have to.
Pay for it, pay the, pay the taxes on it.
All righty, well, I'll make the motion that we adopt with the changes in wording as recommended by the county attorney.
Seconded.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, second item, fee donation requests for the Gordonsville Street Festival.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was the easiest one you ever did.
Sorry there, buddy.
I will not stand in front of the legislative process.
Okay, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Get them close.
Not yet. Anybody have any? Okay, move on to discussion items. Gemanta Wilderness Area Plan.
Can I, can I do something really quick? And I don't know if I can, so I'm going to ask. Could we move up nine, no, sorry. Well, I guess it would be nine E, just in case someone has questions about swing, stream sweepers while the people are here, because if we break and come back, they might not be here. Do, do you have any problem with us doing that?
I have no objection. Anybody have a problem?
No, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Nine E then.
This, this, this should, this should be, this should be very quick. I think you all were made aware of stream sweepers last year. It's a nonprofit organization and there's several concerned and involved citizens. And Mike Collins, if I'm not doing this correctly, please jump in when you, when, when you need to. But, and it, it's actually was a, was a, was a really great project. They hired high school students and college students that were interested in this type of work. They went down, they did a study of the Rapidan River. They, they did a cleanup. They learned, you know, just from A to Z, what to do on the river. But the moral of the story, which, where, where it becomes significant for us is, they got a lot of stuff out of the river. And when they go to dump it out our landfill, they're.
And when they go to dump it at our landfill, they're, they were having to pay the, the tipping fee for it. I'm sorry?
So moved.
Um, second.
Any further discussions?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mike, I actually have a.
Hey, Mike.
Guys are quick before you, that's cool. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Since, since you're here.
Since you're, there's a group, um, that is working with handicapped vets, looking for access to the river.
Huh.
Uh, more in the Germana area.
Right.
Uh, if it's all right with you, I'm gonna, I'd like to put them in touch with you, and maybe we have a three-way conversation about that.
No, it would be great to do. We, uh, you know, we're primarily, well, we're all privately funded, and we're primarily landowner funded, and so we have landowners that want us to begin to look into getting access, and, you know, working with you all, the county, and Madison, and maybe Culpeper on this, and of course, maybe further down. We're amenable to that, but when we do it, we wanna do it in a way that those landowners are enrolled, so we don't get in the situation where we do something, and two years later, you have people back here complaining, say, why'd you do that? You know, we got a bunch of hippies on the river, or something like that, and so it's, it's, we're all for it, and, but let's just bring it along slow.
That's why I would like to have you involved with it, because you're, 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 you're there.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, good. I look forward to the call. All right, guys.
Turn our attention.
Thanks, Jan.
Cheers, mate. It's the least I can do for you guys.
That's Jay Billy too.
Yeah, cause Jay Billy was the one who emailed me, and was like, hey, Shannon, so, thank you. And thank you guys for just.
That was easy.
All right.
All right, back to the Germana Wilderness Area Plan.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the steering committee met, uh, last Tuesday, last Monday, a week ago, Monday. And as you know, the process is, we're bringing forward their work from every meeting, so you're aware, and certainly for the, for the public. Um, a couple of high points that I'll hit, and I'll certainly defer to, uh, Mr. Frame and Mr. White. The reasons why this area plan is being done, as far as the overall objectives are listed in a, in a, uh, bullet form, uh, just after the, uh, the agenda, and that this preliminary draft policy statement of why, what this plan is intending to do is also put, put out. The committee agreed that this was a good working, uh, policy statement for the overall plan. Then you also have a template of what each one of these subareas is going to look like. Um, we are, as staff, filling in SubArea One uh, with its parts, and we'll have a dr, a final, I guess, working draft with the committee next Monday, uh, working on SubArea Two. And we're also, uh, working through our template on the, on the, on the process methodology and the formatting for a public comment, uh, period. So, everything seems to be on track with our work. Uh, we are probably gonna shift it out about thirty days. Uh, Planning Commission said of October, getting a, a draft to, to work on a public hearing. In October, we'll do that in November, and the board will receive Planning Commission's recommendation in December. Uh, the reason why we shifted out thirty days is we wanna, uh, formalize this thirty-day written comment period, uh, that, that would account for uh, written comments to be submitted in the steering committee to, uh, review and, and respond to those comments, so. Uh, as I keep telling our, our, my colleagues, we're, in the steering committee, we're creating whole cloth here, so this is, uh, an original work, and it's just taking some time to, but I think we're, we're really getting the process down and kind of the template.
Steering group did make one change to the list of bullets. And the third one.
What page?
That's, uh, the, be the, uh, second page. Uh, the third bullet, under growth management, it was sort of change, just, uh, uh, sustainable growth management. That's just a, a wording change in the, uh, in the objectives.
Thank you. And Mr. Zodi's giving similar briefings to the Planning Commission at each one of their meetings, and I will be doing, uh, pretty much a, a comprehensive briefing of the EDA at their meeting on July ten.
There you go.
Okay.
What did you say it was? What's the word?
It's just sustainable growth management.
Thank you. Alright.
Okay.
This is interesting.
Yes. We have a budget? We don't have a budget?
We have a budget. Uh, we're still sorting through what, uh, this may mean for, uh, primarily our constitutional officers and, and other, uh, social services. As you can see, the, the budget is, uh, I guess, finalized, uh, except for the governor's vetoes. The, the governor's vetoes really, if my understanding is correct, don't materially affect us, uh, whether it was over or in or what. So, uh, as soon as, uh, Bacon and B M L come forward with, you know, here's what the line items look like. Now, the budget shortfall, the one that they covered between the rainy day and cuts, I don't know how that's gonna shake out. Uh, and as soon as I know, you all will know, and certainly with Glenda and, and his efforts, we'll figure out whether there's any, uh, budget adjustments we'll have to take.
Quick question, the, where did we fall on the schools this year when it came to the adjusted gross index? Did we drop down some, do you know? Trying to remember this. We had this discussion.
Yes, we did.
We did. Okay, that's actually a, a very good thing. Um, the meeting I was in earlier today, Frank Bosio was there. And he was talking about Culpeper County. They originally were going to have a four million dollar shortfall in their, uh, school budget. And because of the use of the rainy day fund, it dropped them from a four hundred million to, or four million to two hundred and eighty-three thousand shortfall. So, it, it, there probably will be somewhat of a shortfall in the school systems budget, however, based on everything, it should be a minimal.
And I think this board offset.
Right.
A lot of the revenues that, I mean, because of the increase that was brought forward, so that's.
So that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing. I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll come back with more definitive information, so. I've kinda mentally blocked all the process. I need to re, re, re-engage my, my thinking on it. Any particulars?
It is what it is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Meet my crossroads visitor center.
Yes, sir. Um, I, uh, bringing to you a.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I didn't know my board reports were that clear.
Well, it was a little bit of a joke, but you know.
I took it, believe it.
And the chairman, uh.
I, I, I got it right away.
He punted.
Okay, Board of Supervisors.
Can I, can I at least say one thing on this matter?
If you feel you.
I, I do, I do.
We tried to take your shovel away from you, you should, you should let it go.
Well, I know, I, and, and a better, more seasoned administrator would. Jay was here earlier, but we had a, and Lee was at the meeting with the Tourism Advisory Committee, and I, I really honestly think this, these resources and working through a strategic plan, the plan is to actually have a summit in January. I, I really think there's a great opportunity to bring these leaders, uh, from the tourism to kind of really treat the, that advisory committee as kind of counterpart to the Economic Development Authority, and, and just, in helping advise this board on strategy of, of treating tourism as economic development.
Where, where the, uh, the Tourism Advisory Group has, uh, an opportunity to make inputs on funding decisions, uh, gives them a little more, uh, uh, it's more than just a debating or discussion society. It gives them something, uh, uh, you know, hard and fast that impacts what the county does.
Good. That's all, I, I'm done.
Okay. Then we'll do the Board of Supervisors' financial policies.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we were, uh, to come to you at the July eighth meeting, uh, with, uh, the financial ball, uh, policies, understanding uh, these were just draft and, and coming out of the retreat, and so we were gonna, uh, combine those with the other existing policies. Glenda and I, uh, talked to our financial advisors, and we certainly got, uh, the clearer, the clear understanding from them that this is really a good opportunity for you all to make some financial policies that would help support the county's credit rating, because annually, whether we like it or not, we're reviewed on our credit worthiness by the rating agencies. If you all adopt policies that align with how the terms that they use, or things that align with, with what you wanna do, it really could be a benefit to us. And so, we wanted to be more deliberate about this process, so we're working through some drafting and language. This is not committing to you to any course of action. I, I don't wanna presume that. But we wanted to make sure that whatever you all consider is certainly consistent with good, uh, good financial, I guess, practice. And so, we're delaying it, and we'll come back on July twenty-sixth, at least, with a, with a concept document.
The only comment I had, as I looked at this, was the, the existing two policies, I guess it is, or maybe there's three separate ones. This review probably by Ted or whomever you're working with, probably should include those existing policies, cause there could be words in there that aren't exactly current thinking, so.
I would think that, that the policy would be a little broader and supersede these.
Yeah, whatever. It's just, we, we should, we should not just, uh, leave those in place without some review.
Right. The plan is to incorporate those with your, the new policies that we talked about at the retreat, and, you know, um, definitely to have them be, um, you know, no conflicts between them, that have one policy doctrine for financial policy.
For reserve funds, for capital, I mean, we're gonna go down the laundry list, but absolutely, cause when we met with, with Ted and his associates, that debt service policy, we said, well, if we're going to do this, let's make sure it is everything. So, I, I didn't wanna offer that we were coming in the eighth with something and not deliver, but this is the reason why.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything on the information item?
I have a question. Uh, the, uh, the projection for CSA is about four hundred and thirty thousand, uh, under the budgeted amount. How much of that is, uh, is the county's?
Um, roughly a third of that.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Uh, anything on the committee reports?
Uh, might mention that the, uh, Dogwood Health and Rehab, uh, received a bronze, uh, NACO, N A C L, National Associate, no, it's not NACO, it's National Healthcare Association and the National Center for Assisted Living. Uh, a bronze award for, uh, uh, meeting, uh, Baldridge Excellence Standards. And, uh, that's a, uh, that's a part of a, a three-tiered program that would eventually hopefully get to, uh, silver and gold levels, but that's, uh, that's the first start, uh, to show that we are, we have taken steps to make sure that we are a quality, uh, healthcare organization.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, on your information, wasn't on your agenda, but the letter is out in front of you, that we received on the NACO award for the Route Three Initiative, and here's the, the plaque, uh, certificate. So, I thank everybody that had part in the genesis of this and caring for it, ought to be duly recognized. This is a big deal.
Good. All right, well, the last thing to do before we go into closing would be to schedule a public hearing for S U P fourteen oh three. Anybody have a problem with that? Do I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, in that case, we'll go into closed meeting.
Ready? All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following: consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body; and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public authority body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meetings. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion of said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right. To the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were or discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Roll call.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, before the public hearing, uh, are there any questions to address?
I got my questions answered.
Okay.
I don't know, Brian's got anything else he wants to say?
Uh, Treasurer, uh, is unable to be here tonight, and I did talk with her about this, this morning. Everything in, from her perspective, is certainly in order. Uh, she is going to be transferring, substitute, if this board approves, these documents tonight will be, uh, invested five million dollars of, uh, long-term reserves for the county. And she also said that the fund is now up to a hundred and sixty million since it started in February. Um, and it seems to be, uh, she just came from the Treasurer's office last week, and there seemed to be quite a lot of interest from similar counties to us, uh, about investing. So, the more they invest, the more, more, more strength there is.
Yeah, Bacon was doing an awful lot, uh, B M R D, uh, they're, they're doing a lot of things for us. I mean, you know, insurance, this other stuff, that, I mean, it's, uh, you know, we're getting more than just legislative support.
Yes, sir. So that's all I had to hear. Director, Director of Government Affairs was at that meeting today, the whole time, so.
Okay, so at this point, we're waiting.
Until seven o'clock?
Yes.
Tick, tick. Come and count the candy.
Does anybody sign up?
We can, we can recess until seven.
Now you wanna count the candy?
Nah, actually, I'm gone. Open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Close public hearing.
Damn, lose my touch.
Okay, um, any discussion? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're gone.
Is that a record?